Board of Education meeting in Montpel Township. We'd like to get started. Mrs. Slump, roll call, please.
Dr. Cordelina, here. Mr. Dotry.
Here.
Mrs. Spano, here. Dr. Modrak.
Here.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Mr. Rappaport.
Here.
Ms. Zuckerman, here. Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Mr. Grau.
Here.
Mr. Arena.
Here.
Mr. Rozeski.
Pleasure of the leisure, please.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Mrs. Slump, the open public meeting. Notice, please.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which their business is affected or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Montpel Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montpel Township Municipal Building, all Montpel Public Schools, the Montpel Public Library, the Montpel Township Board of Education Administrative Office Buildings, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the Board's official newspaper, on February 5th, 2022.
Thank you very much. I guess you're it tonight, Dan. So, double duty, boy. I didn't get a double stipend for this, huh?
So, starting with the sports update, the boys' basketball team has a few games left coming down the stretch before they attempt to make it on in their state tournament. They'll be the ninth seed taking on the eighth seed in the first round, and first they will celebrate their senior night at home tomorrow at 7:00 PM versus Roxbury. The girls' team is catching fire just the right time as they're headed to the semifinals of the Morris County Tournament, where they will face two seeded Morris Town on Friday night at CCM. The bowling team continues their dominant stretch as they are now your state sectional champions, and tomorrow we wish them the best of luck as they'll compete for a group title. The hockey team wrapped up their season last week falling to 5-3-2. It was a rollercoaster season for the team, but we thank them for their efforts and especially wish the seniors Trey Bressage and Chase Unis well in the next chapter. And finally, the wrestling team fell to a tough perimeter squad in the North One Three semifinals a week ago, but they bounced back and defeated West Morris 39-38 in their next match, and we wish them luck the rest of the way. So, onto news at the high school and some past news. Student orientation occurred last week for eighth graders entering the high school next year, and the Chinese Honor Society hosted their Chinese New Year celebration this past weekend. For current news, ticket sales have begun for our annual spring musical. Opening on March 3rd at 7:30 PM, the MTHS Theater Company will bring us their performance of Grease. Performances will continue on March 4th and 5th at 7:30 PM, as well as on March 6th at 2:00 PM. We're excited to see what our amazing drama club is put together. And for future news, next week schools will be closed for President's Day on February 21st, and looking into March, FBLA members competing at the state level are preparing for their trip to Atlantic City for March 9th to March 11th.
Thank you very much, Dan. Any questions again? Thank you again for the great recourse you've been giving to us. Thank you. Dr. Renee, the superintendent's report, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to know, we had a meeting last Tuesday evening where our most recent demographic study was presented. Dr. Richard Britt brought statistical forecasting who had compared the study, presented a PowerPoint going through all of the major points, with our term women projections, the impact of development in the community, and both his PowerPoint and the demographic study are both available on the Board's website. You can search for demographic and get there, or under the district dropdown, there is a separate tab for demographic study, and you can find information there. I did want to follow up. Our last board meeting had several students come and speak to the Board about the dramatic production of Grease that is upcoming, and they had questions about the use of masks by the performers. I'm happy to report that they have resolved that issue, and the student performers will be allowed to perform without masks. Masks will still be required for those in the audience because it's before March 7, and by all members of the crew. And lastly, I did issue a communication to the community just in case anybody was not aware, the district will be making masks optional as of March 7 when the governor lifts the ban, I should say, the mask mandate. So, I now have the delightful opportunity to introduce Mr. Kenneth Natzat, one of our assistant principals at the high school. This is a highlight that we get to enjoy as a Board four times a year when we recognize our ShopRite Stars. These are truly shining examples of wonderful students that we have at the high school, and I know that you will be just as impressed as we always are when Mr. Natzat highlights some of their accomplishments.
Good evening. I'm thrilled to present our ShopRite Stars for the Second Marking Period for the 2021-2022 School Year. The nine stars were nominated by faculty members in five different categories, and the winners were selected by the administrative committee. In addition to the recognition of these wonderful students, ShopRite's summary ShopRite generously donates $1,000 to the class of 2022. Please join me in congratulating each of our stars this evening. In the field of academics, congratulations to Michael Ho. Michael has a reputation among his teachers for being a tireless and humble worker who recklessly challenges himself to master your content. Michael's work in our math department is an example of his dedication to learning. During his sophomore year, he took one of the most challenging classes offered at MTHS, Algebra II. During the following summer, Michael taught himself AP Calc BC, which is the highest level of math that we offer, and earned a five on the AP exam. Michael is currently enrolled in four AP classes, as well as an independent study in multivariable calculus, and is maintaining a senior year GPA of 4.6. In addition to being a tenacious learner, Michael is also a gifted teacher. Specifically, he runs an online theory with over 20,000 current high school and college students as a platform to receive extra help in a variety of content areas. In this community, Michael personally tutors students at all levels of math. When not teaching or learning math, Michael is a black belt in Isha Jitsu Karate and competitive speed cuber. Michael can solve the Rubik's Cube in 11 seconds and 35 seconds if blindfolded after taking a single look at the puzzle. Michael's made on several acceptance letters through top colleges and plans to pursue a major in mathematics and a minor in neuropsychology. Again, congratulations. In the field of athletics, congratulations to Robert George. Robert is one of the most talented pole vaulters that we've ever had at MTHS. As a three-season athlete, Robert has competed in varsity swimming, varsity sprint track, varsity indoor track, and cross country, where he is currently captain of the varsity team. In competition, Robert placed second in the state sectional outdoor pole vault in 2021, and is the two-time, reigning two-time Morris County Pole Vault Champion, placing first in 2021 and 2022. Robert is not competing. He finds other ways to contribute to our open state community. For example, Robert has assisted in the design and rollout of our annual sports fair, where incoming freshmen have an opportunity to learn more about MTHS athletics. Additionally, in 2021, Robert was selected to serve as a delegate in the American Legion Boy State Program. This prestigious government education program typically accepts students of the highest character, and Robert was a deserving participant. In the fall, Robert will attend Ithaca College to major in business and marketing. Robert's athletic talent in the pole vault will also follow. He committed to compete on the indoor and outdoor track and field team. Again, congratulations. In the field of the arts, congratulations to Santina Di Bandella. Santina has made some outstanding contributions to our arts department in the past four years through her participation in choir orchestra and the Montpel Theater Company, where she currently serves as co-president. In early March next month, Santina will perform on her stage for perhaps a final time in the spring musical Grease, where she plays the characterism. Outside of school, Santina has landed several lead roles in local productions such as Carrie, Urantown, Heather, your good man Charlie Brown, Cabaret, Peter Pan, and Lion. Santina has also been selected to various regional choirs and enjoyed years of training in voice, acting, dance, piano, and violin. While all of these accomplishments are outstanding, Santina is most excited about her original music. She has four songs on various music platforms, including YouTube, and will release a fifth song soon. Santina also volunteers her time as a student teacher for various church CCD programs and lends her voice to the St. Pius's Nativity Choir, which is available still to view on the Power of YouTube page. In the fall, Santina will attend University of Miami's prestigious Frost School of Music and pursue a career in music industry. Again, congratulations. In the field of community service, congratulations to Sam Ellen. It was only a matter of time before Sam received a ShopRite Star Award because she's been on our own power radar since last year. Specifically, last year, Sam was the only junior to be nominated for a ShopRite Star Award, as you know, we exclusively consider seniors. But the staff member who nominated her felt so strongly about Sam's contributions that they submitted the nomination to our email. Sam founded the Relay for Life Club at MTHS during her sophomore year, and is president and has been solely responsible for its growth and success ever since. Last year, Sam was nominated to attend the 2021 Youth Wellness Conference and has worked to bring mental health-oriented activities and awareness to MTHS. Sam also graciously and generously volunteers her time for other important causes such as Peers as Leaders, where she mentors underclassmen, and the Community Food Bank at New Jersey, where she packs boxes of food donated to local soup kitchens. Lastly, Sam is described as being a role model for her peers. In addition to her volunteer work, she currently takes four AP classes, is captain of the girls' swim team, inductee into the National Honor Society and Spanish Honor Society, and was a lifelong supervisor during the summer at Lake Valhalla. Sam has been accepted into Northeastern University and will decide a major in very near future. Again, congratulations. In the field of leadership, congratulations to Alyssa Neff. As I typically do in meeting with a ShopRite Star winner, I asked Alyssa to share some of the accomplishments she was most proud of during attending MTHS. In typical fashion, Alyssa talked about being able to learn from so many different people and having opportunities to pursue her own interests through different teachers, academic programs, and extracurricular activities at MTHS. In other words, Alyssa is not one to brag, so I'll brag. Alyssa is an inductee in the Italian Honor Society and National Honor Society, active participant in yearbook and FBLA, where she qualified for nationals, treasurer of the Student Activities Council, director of the food choir, captain of the varsity basketball team, and president of MTTV, as well as the Tri and Music Honor Society. Despite the time that she dedicates to each one of these organizations, Alyssa has also volunteered time for community in Pathways, St. Pius's, Peers as Leaders, and the Pine Brook Volunteer Fire Department. One of Alyssa's true passions is to film, edit, and produce videos, and she was the driving force behind the 2020 Virtual Pepperella, as well as the Light Goes On Documentary, which addressed MTHS's handling of the COVID pandemic. Again, neither of these projects would have happened without Alyssa. Alyssa is incredibly talented, extremely humble, and unapologetically selfless, characteristics that all leaders should hope to admire. In the fall, Alyssa will attend Clemson and major in graphic communications. Again, congratulations to Alyssa and to all of our second marking period ShopRite Stars.
Thank you, Mr. Natzat. I have concluded my report, but I know that Mrs. Caramello would like nothing more than a picture of our honor raise, so if you could just take a break for a couple minutes, she'll allow you to get that picture taken.
Let's have one final round of applause. As you may know, this is the second semester. We'll have a third and a fourth also. At this time, usually after we have the ShopRite Scholars, we just declare a five-minute recess because I know a lot of the youngsters and parents will probably want to leave. So, give us about five minutes, and those that want to leave can do so, and those that want to stay, we welcome you to stay. Okay? Thank you. That was a droll saying. Schools, I would encourage you to read them and rejoice. Business administrator's report?
No report.
Okay. Section G, we'll go into the committee reports. Finance and Facilities, Dr. Cordelina.
Thank you, Mr. Grau. The Finance and Facilities Committee, that was just before our public meeting, we continue to review the 2022-2023 budget bill in the areas of instruction, student support, and operations, and we have several meetings lined up to accomplish this process as we near the ultimate adoption of the history of such a program.
Thank you. David Mobrak, the union curriculum, no report. Policy, Mr. O'Brien?
The Policy and Personnel Committee has met and will speak, and the current documents for approval of the whole board going forward.
Thank you. Communications, Michelle?
No report.
Safety and Security, Mr. Rappaport?
No report.
Okay. No way of hockey. Laissez-aller in Jersey School Boards, Karen?
On September, February, uh, sorry, on Saturday, February 26th, the Legislative Committee will meet. We will have the pleasure of hosting Senator Vito LoFallo, Senator LoFallo with new Senate Education Committee Chair, and I'm sure we'll have lots of questions for him.
Thank you. Morris County School Board, Mr. O'Brien?
We meet on the 17th.
Of...
Of this month.
February 26th, okay. Morris County Educational Services, permission, Joe?
Yes, we met last Wednesday, and the one item is that they're trying to sell their property at one of the padmistry in Rockaway, and there is interest from a big outside group to purchase it, so we're looking forward to that.
Thank you. Clear of awareness, Mr. Quan?
We're back last Wednesday on February 9th, and among the things we've discussed were the love sign fundraiser, continuing from last year. You imagine the high school, the middle school participate, and try to see how many of the elementary schools want to. We know some of them aren't doing their own thing, but hopefully, hopefully they'll jump on the band while we're here. And we talked about the end of the year also, graduation. I know that people are gonna be needing with the high school principal to discuss possible post-graduation plans, see if anything can be done to try to do something, I guess almost akin to like a project graduation thing to help people celebrate safely after the event. And discussing also the possibility of maybe trying to resurrect the eighth grade dance levels are, hopefully after everything clears over, and hopefully that people might, these might be ready to get back out and have a good, safe time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Athletic posters, Mr. O'Brien?
I missed the last meeting, too, like hospital bleeding. Next meeting, the first one today, next month.
Thank you. Laissez-aller, Cedar Hill, Karen?
No report for the Hoffman School. Next meeting is March 16th.
Okay, Hilldale, I don't have any report. Valley View, Joe?
Next meeting is March 18th.
Christine, Form Mason?
So, there HS, a meeting was scheduled for Monday, the 24th of January, but it's been rescheduled to Monday, February 28th at 7:00. The meeting will be held virtually, and the Zoom link with meeting documents will be sent out ahead of the new date for parents.
Thank you. Woodlock School, Mr. Quan?
No report.
A middle school, Lovar Middle School?
No report.
And the high school?
Next meeting is next Tuesday, the 22nd.
22nd, okay. Thank you very much. Next part of the agenda is for public participation. We see a lot of people out there. There are two parts of public participation. The first one is any comments, questions regarding agenda items. Anybody who would like to speak to something else will be given an opportunity after the, after the items are voted upon. Are there any questions on the agenda items? Seeing none, but I have a motion on items I drew in. It's good?
No.
Wow. Thanks. You woke everyone up. The motion seconded, okay. Any comments on I? J? K? L? And M? Seeing none. Mrs. Slump, roll call, please.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Dr. Modrak?
Yes.
Dr. Cordelina?
Yes.
Mr. Dotry?
Yes.
Mrs. Spano?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Ms. Zuckerman?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes. Section F, there is no need for closed board session this evening. Section Q, any old business of the board members?
Charlie, I would just like to thank the board members who so far have joined and contributed to the Relay for Life event on 2/11. We have a majority of the boards that has joined, including our very super attendant, our road car. So, I was forward to having the rest of us join so we can meet our goal of $1,000 that we've set.
Thank you, Karen. General board comment, my comment would be, right now, we have two meetings scheduled for March, the first and the 15th. We may be moved to the 15th to the 22nd, depending upon receipt of some state aid figure and information from the State Department of Education. Public participation, section S. This is the opportunity for anyone who would like to come forward. I know at the last meeting, uh, did not go as well as others, and I know that we're here and you're here. We respect you, and I know you will respect us, uh, because we have youngsters in the audience, and we want to hear you, and it's a nice mechanism. If you would like to be heard, please come forward. We'll listen to your comments, and then we'll move on to the next person who would like to speak. So, we don't get up at this time, so please just come forward to the microphone if you'd like to speak, and just give us your name and what your comments will be.
Dave Auerbach, you want to talk about the masking of children?
About what, sir?
Excuse me?
I didn't hear what you said.
I want to talk about March 7th, the masking of children, unmasking of children, actually. I wanted to educate the board members of Dr. Roadcar mandates tonight. There seems to be discrepancies on the word mandate versus laws. Whether you're in a state of emergency or not, all mandates are only policies. They are not laws. They cannot be enforced using law enforcement either. Anything that goes against the Constitution of the United States and/or laws on record, do not supersede the law. I'll give you an example of that. If an official such as a mayor or governor can mandate that all people who wear blue on Mondays be enslaved, that mandate is illegal, absurd, and against the Constitution. The same goes for mask mandates, vaccine mandates, quarantine mandates, especially since there is no statistical data to back that masks, vaccines, and quarantines work. Governor Merkney just stated this in an interview with CNN. He said he has no statistical data to prove that mask wearing prevents the spread of COVID-19. But in his opinion, he thinks it works. This is the problem. Too many people, too many people are giving their opinion and have no facts to support their statements. In addition to the Bill of Rights and other amendments, the 13th Amendment and the Emancipation Proclamation supersede the mandates that are enslaving laws. Therefore, it is not to be enforced, and if it is enforced, that's not only going to grow, it is treason against the people. Therefore, the elected official who mandated such a thing should be removed and charged to court of them. Not wearing a mask is not a crime. It is actually a crime to impose such a mandate on any person to make it a crime. Governors should tell you they are complying with the federal government by forcing the mandates are in violation of the 10th Amendment, which prohibits the commandeering or forcing states to use their own resources to carry out federal policies. They infringe upon the First Amendment or in violation of the Fourth Amendment. I'm here, I'm here today to make sure any guidelines or recommendations by the New Jersey Board of Health not be considered. We have all the data now, and the truth is out. The masks don't work against COVID-19, the vaccines don't work, and quarantining our children for no reason doesn't work. Now it's time to return to normal. We need you to be leaders for our children and return the entire school district back to the way it was pre-COVID. If your teachers need the proper education on COVID-19 and these gene therapy vaccines, I would be happy to hold a seminar and give them the real hard facts, which I have been researching and compiling for the past two years. Last point I'll make. One of my subteachers told him, when the masks come off the students, all kids in the classroom will have to be 10 feet away from her and 10 feet away from each other. We all know the style teaching doesn't work. I was a teacher for a short period of time. My mother is a retired teacher for 33 years. She would agree with me. If you're scared and you're a teacher, then you have to quit. Okay? No one should live in fear, and I don't want that bad example except for our children in the school district. Let us learn from these huge mistakes we made and make sure we never mask these children ever again.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kate Traina, 84 River Road.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your name again?
Kate Traina, 84 River Road. With the upcoming expiration of the school mask mandate, I'm here to urge you yet again to fulfill your roles as members of the Board of Education and put our children's education first, and officially end the mask mandate for Montpel Schools with no conditions, no quarantines, with no conditions, no quarantines, no distancing. While, yes, the Board of Ed, the Board of Health, excuse me, has yet to come out with further guidance, but last I checked, the Board of Health isn't a governing body over our schools. Responsibility of our children's education doesn't fall on them. It falls on you. Our children have suffered enough. How many children need to fall behind academically? How many children need to experience developmental delays? How many children need to suffer mental health issues that impact them both in school and at home for the rest of their lives? How much damage must be done before you finally stand up and do the right thing? Stop hiding behind the governor, the Board of Health, or whatever other government entity you can try to drag into this and own your responsibility. The responsibility you were elected or repaid to bear. You are using your own unfounded fears and concerns of personal liability as an excuse to continue abusing our children. Anything short of a return to a completely normal school year is unacceptable. The masking of our children needs to end now without conditions and without discrimination. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Toby Anderson.
Might be able to hold that up, it might be easier. Take it out of that handle. Look it out, actually.
Thank you. My name's Toby Anderson. I just wanted also to speak on the mask mandate. I've noticed that 10 out of 12 of you are not wearing masks. It's a choice that our parents and kids should have. Masks are not healthy for our kids psychologically, medically or otherwise. The quarantines are psychologically damaging. It's damaging for those of us who need to get to work, people who have hourly jobs. The quarantines kill our ability to work and open our businesses. 10 out of 12 of you have exercised choice. I would hope that means that you'll let everybody else have the same choice. Thank you.
Is there anyone else at this time? I know, okay.
Lauren Taylor, 82 River Road, Montpel. So it's come to my attention that you're still masking on the school buses. And under Article 15B4 of Section 5302 Title 49, public transportation does not include school buses. I, for one, living right on River Road, paid a very handsome amount of money for private busing. So I don't get why my kid has to wear a mask on a bus that I pay for privately, and it's not even part of the mandate. So we'd like the masks off on the buses as well. If not, I'd like substantiated evidence as to where you're determining this from and who's governing this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, she had one more question. I think you're going to have to take the mic down.
Marine Royden, 15 Mars Lane. I would like to speak on behalf of my two sons, a 10-year-old and an 8-year-old. My 10-year-old hates going to school now. He's a very happy child. He used to be a very happy child. He hates going to school. He hates going to school. He says he can't see the faces of his friends. He no longer sees his friends. He can't see the faces of his children, of his teachers. He no longer sees them. He has a hard time understanding them now. He is no longer performing as well as he used to. He is losing confidence in himself. He is crying at home. He says he hates going to school. He asked me if he can go to school without wearing a mask. I said, you can. I will back you up. Your father will back you up. But you will have to go to stand against the towns, police, against the towns, your school's principal, against your teachers. Do you have the guts to do that? He said, I do. But I want to graduate with my friends. The only reason he is still wearing a mask to school and not standing up against me, a 10-year-old, is because he wants to graduate with his friends. And it hurts me as a parent to see my child to have his heart broken every single day because he can't enjoy his childhood. My 8-year-old, my 8-year-old is a very happy boy. But he says, Mom, I can't play gym. I can't go to gym with my friends. I have to use noodles to play catch. I have to use noodles because I can't touch my friends, even outside. He can't do that. How could you do that towards your children? It's time to end it. No matter what the governor says, no matter what, there are the districts around you all standing up against this atrocities. And we will open up. Please be leaders for our children. Please be leaders for us. Thank you.
Okay, I.
Mark Mansour, 13 Hollister Oaks, Waco. I have two comments. The first one is, I hope our district can try to meet to adopt a policy of an optional quarantine, like many other districts have come out with, such as Howell Township, Middletown, Manalapan, Marlboro, not, excuse me, Pensville, Upper Freehold, Westwood, Pensalkin, and Plumstead School District, just to name a few. I'm sure there's some others that I missed. I've been keeping a track of what I've seen online of districts that adopted optional quarantines because I feel that as an educator myself, that is the most important thing for the kids, to be able to be in the school. So I'm glad we are one of 178 districts so far that have announced, it could be more. That's when it's more than that number. 178 districts have announced there'll be mask optional on March 7th. So I hope you guys can take that into consideration. And I also wanted to share a comment from an individual who could not be here tonight. And I'm going to kind of re-verbate him here. So my concern, Dr. Robitar, is that you may not have consulted with a health officer that has been in place, Mr. Michael Hodges, for over six months. He's been in the community and has listened to the community and understands the concerns parents in the community that have relayed, excuse me, that have relayed to him different mental, emotional well-being concerns they have. He had evaluated this survey you sent out last summer that showed almost 80% of all polled want mask optional. Instead, you didn't converse with him, but have decided to wait to discuss what you should do in Montpel with someone that starts tomorrow and is not familiar with the community. That hasn't been, and that hasn't been involved in any of the Board of Health conversations to this point. Doesn't have kids in Montpel, that I'm aware of. Doesn't live in Montpel, and that is coming at this totally blind. So we hope that you can establish a good relationship with this individual, for our children, for everybody's sake in this room. And we have tons of people in here, which is great to see people engaged. And we hope we can move forward together, work together on a system that will work for all of the children in town, not just those who may be afraid of something. Something that brings the community together, which is what we desperately need.
Hi, my name is Riley Klosiv. I live at 1A Cambra. I'm a student at Montpel Community High School. I'm a junior. As many of you who do not know, I'm partnering. I've had this since I was about a year old. And mask banning is incredibly hard during school. Hearing teachers has been incredibly difficult for not just me, but even them who can hear. And it is just, learning has been incredibly hard, not just because of masks, but because of social distancing, because of that, because virtual learning, because everything. I know you guys have heard from a lot of parents, but I think it's important that you hear a student's perspective because what parents say are just what they've heard and interpreted from their kids. But what we have to say is a lot more important. And I think that hearing from us is probably one of the most important things you guys should do. A lot of us are, would like masks to be gone. Most of us don't even bother wearing them in school half the time. We don't wear them correctly. Nobody can hear each other. We even don't wear them during lunch. Like, there's really, there's not one anymore. And I hope that you guys stand by what you already said and allow us to stop wearing them March 7th because it would be tremendously helpful for all of us and not just me because I have partner. But, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other speakers at this time, I would like to thank the number of speakers that have come up. It's good to see so many faces here. A lot of them are recognized, others I don't recognize, but they, I'm sure that they are here for a specific purpose.
I just wanted to address Mr. Mansour's comment. I'm not sure the source of that information, but it is totally inaccurate. I have been in contact.
I have the letters.
I have been in contact with, whether it's Michael Hodges or his predecessor, Amy Paluso, consistently throughout the whole pandemic. I just spoke to, communicated with Mr. Hodges last week with regard to the most recent communication that we sent out indicating that the mask would be optional. So I am just stunned that someone could portray me as not having spoken to him for six months. I speak to him continually. And that's just something that's been expected throughout the pandemic, that local school districts are in consultation with their local Boards of Health. And I have done so frequently. So I don't want anyone here at this meeting to be left with the impression that I have not been in communication with the Board of Health. I absolutely haven't.
Thank you very much, Dr. Robitar. Doing this whole thing, we're paying them. Dr. Robitar has got the public informed. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I think Dr. Robitar has got everyone informed. When the executive order came out effective March 7th, she immediately took action, talked to the respective health officials. She's been on top of all documentation we've been getting from the state, anything at all. I know some districts have done a lot of things. And Middletown is famous for doing things and then having to withdraw it. But I'm not going to get into that. I think Dr. Robitar and Mrs. Slum have taken notes of your meeting. We will continue to follow the path. I thank you very much for coming and wish you all a good evening. I entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
No move.
There's been a motion in a second. Do we have a roll call to adjourn, Mrs. Slum?
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Dr. Modrak? Dr. Cordelina? Mr. Dotry?
Yes.
Mrs. Fanna?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Ms. Zuckerman? Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Grahl?
Yes, thank you very much. I have any hope to see you in our next meeting.